Okay, we'll call this call to order this public hearing. Thank you all for coming. Good evening. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the mayor and on behalf of the city council, I want to welcome you all this evening. This is a public hearing into bylaws that will be read out or introduced in a few moments by the deputy city clerk. Council for the city of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and has directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will first present a summary of each proposed bylaw, one by one. The floor will then be open to anyone in attendance that wishes to present his or her views on the subject of the proposed bylaw. Those that are pre-registered to speak will be given first opportunity to speak and then we'll open the floor. I stress to you all that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these bylaws, but there's a few rules attached to this. It's not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with either council members, with staff, or with those in the audience who might be opposed to your point of view. So we ask that you restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw, to be as brief and concise as possible. We're asking speakers to limit themselves to a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who gets a chance, who wants to, will get a chance to speak on a proposed bylaw. You can speak more than once if you've got some good stuff, but you have to get back at the back of the line. Speakers will please be respectful of each speaker and allow, or rather, the audience could be, please be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. And to that end, we ask that you refrain from clapping, from cheering, from booing any of the presentations made this evening. We want everyone to feel at ease. I know how difficult it is to stand at a microphone for some people, and we want them to feel at ease tonight. So as chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the proposed bylaw, that becomes abusive, or that becomes repetitive of views that that speaker has already made known to council members. Please note, if you have a written submission and you want that to be part of the record of tonight's meeting, you must hand it to the clerk's desk here prior to the adjournment of that item. And we'll adjourn each of the four items separately as the evening progresses. After the adjournment of an item, council can't receive any further discussion, any further new information. Now, this is a, these are courts that have established this. We can't receive new information after we adjourn an item until the item is passed fourth reading or otherwise been disposed of. Immediately following the adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we'll convene a regularly, a regular council meeting, that in order that council can give consideration to a number of things on the council agenda, including the four items on tonight's public hearing agenda. If any council member has some information they need before they vote, we can not vote on one of the items, but the intent is that we consider all four of the items tonight. So I will now call on Ms. Lor to introduce the bylaws on tonight's agenda and planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. First item on tonight's agenda is an application to revise the land use designation and zoning of 352 Marmont Street, by law numbers 4365 and 4366, 2012.
Your Worship and members of council, my name is Michael Dollywall, development planner with the city. The subject site is located in southwest Coquitlam, north of Walls Avenue and south of Rochester Avenue, at 352 Marmont Street. The site and the sites surrounding the subject site are designated neighborhood attached residential. Zoning on the site and to the north, south, and east is RT12 family residential. Zoning on the site to the west is RS31 family residential. The applicant seeks to re-designate the site low-density apartment residential and rezone the site from RT1 to RM1, two-story, low-density apartment residential, in order to enable the conversion of, the conversion of the exterior interior of the existing duplex into a seven-unit seniors housing project. The seven units are all one-bedroom units, and the applicant will be entering into an operating agreement with BC Housing for funding and oversight, and will be required to register a housing agreement with the city as well, to further regulate the development. Staff are recommending all, um, staff are recommending second and third readings to OCP Amendment Bylaw Number 4365, 2012, and zoning amendment by law number 4366, 2012. Should council give second and third readings, a development permit will be brought forward for council authorization at a later date with a housing agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Dollywall. Ms., Counselor Robinson.
I, I just have a quick question around the, the housing agreement and for seniors housing, what's the minimum age for this, this project?
Your Worship, we're setting 65 years of age as the minimum age, although the caregiver or, or partner may be of a different age, but it would be the main occupant or the, one of the occupants would have to be 65 years or older.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ream.
Thank you. My question is for Mr. Dollywall with respect to, you said all three readings. I just want to clarify that we would just be doing second and third reading tonight and that fourth reading would come at a later date.
Through Your Worship, that is correct.
Thank you.
Well, it's, it's, it's up to council, obviously, but the, the staff are requesting, when we get to the council meeting, that it be second and third reading. Any further comments? Okay, I have a speaker's list who are pre-registered. We'll begin with Sandy Burpee at 985 Corona Crescent, followed by Chris Wilson. Sandy Burpee.
Thank you, Your Worship, councilors. I'm here this evening representing the Tri-City's Homelessness and Housing Task Group. I know you're all familiar with the need for additional affordable rental housing in Coquitlam, and that need is only going to be exacerbated with the advent of the Evergreen Line and pressure for redevelopment on housing in the Coquitlam area. So it's, it's really good news that the Bulgarian Home Society is proposing seven units of affordable housing for seniors, although a modest amount, certainly a step in the right direction. But I'm sure you, as councilors, must find it uncomfortable to receive some strongly worded opposition letters to a project like this. I want to, in thinking about, back about that, I remembered an article that I read in the Vancouver Sun in 2008 that cited two articles, one by the city of Vancouver and the other by Vancouver Coastal House, which examined the impacts of social housing projects once those projects were in operation and compared them to the neighborhood opposition prior to, to approval of the zoning. And for the vast majority cases, there, there were no impact. But I know that, that, that you're aware of that as well. Some of you are veterans of the 2007 Cold Weather Mac Program Marathon Hearing, eight hours. And once the Cold Weather Mac Program was in operation and certainly in subsequent years, there has been no increase in crime in the area, there's been no decrease in property value, and children have not been accosted to and from school. And, and more recently, that, to that, the Comal Lake Garden Public Hearing, all the opposition over the YWCA's project. And now that that operation, the, the project is in operation, the only impact it's had is to improve the streetscape along Comal Lake Avenue. So I'm confident that once the seniors tenants move into 352 Marmont Street, that they'll quickly become part of the fabric of the neighborhood and will bring added diversity, not disharmony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Burpee. Our next speaker is Chris Wilson, 630 Hillcrest, followed by William Bleed. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you very much. I'm a member of the Homelessness and Housing Task Group, and I'd like to speak in favor of the proposal. While I understand many of the residents' initial concerns, I'm assuming many of these concerns have been laid to rest now that more information about the project is available in terms of the makeup of the suites and the age of the residents. I truly believe we need to give seniors a chance to age in place, and this proposal does just that. I also believe that a proposal like this achieves many of the goals that have been agreed to in the citywide official community plan, including residential intensification, rental housing options, and commitment to accepting special housing needs. As well, many of the goals of the southwest Coquitlam area plan are met with this proposal, including upgrading existing neighborhoods through redevelopment of older stock, providing a variety of housing types that address diverse needs and demographics, providing a range of housing types for seniors with services nearby, the creation of market and non-market rental housing within the area, seeking opportunities with senior government initiatives, in this case, BC Housing, and providing a mix of housing types throughout southwest Coquitlam. This project meets all of these agreed-upon goals for this area, and to have both city staff support and BC Housing financing for the project indicates to me that there truly is a need for a project like this. In terms of the concerns about the renters, there are renters all over the area right now. There's all kinds of basement suites and houses with renters in the area, and there's 66 subsidized rental units in the Chateau de Ville complex at the bottom of Marmont and Burnett. While I don't specifically live in the area, I would love to have a bunch of seniors living in my neighborhood. This project meets many of the goals of the area plan. It helps to revitalize the area, and we need to provide more housing options for seniors, and that's why I'm in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. William Bleed at 1061 Walls Avenue, followed by Catherine Wong.
Hi, Your Worship, councilors. I'm a resident in the area at 1061 Walls Avenue. So firstly, I would like to make very clear that Regina Knowles to us was in May, and all you mentioned was the re-designation of zoning from neighborhood attached residential to low-density apartment residential. There was no mention at all about being for senior housing or funded by BC Housing. So obviously, our concerns at that time would only be able to address the situation that we know, but it seems our concerns have been totally judged out of context and unfairly criticized and ridiculed. The fact is, it wasn't until September that we received an open house invitation from the Bulgarian Home Society, and only then did it mention the purpose for elderly housing. So why weren't we properly informed in the beginning, since the rezoning is obviously closely tied in to the housing initiative? And in fact, even from that time to now, there seems to be other details in flux. For example, at first, the proposed age that was mentioned to us was going to be 50 years old, as considered elderly, but now it seems like, it was just mentioned earlier, that it's going to be 65. In light of the new information, there's still various questions and concerns, I think, that the neighborhoods we have in around the planning for this property. One, after rezoning is approved, is it only obligated to provide the seniors affordable housing, and for how many years? What if they only decide to stop after a few months or a year? Is there any guarantees? If the residents, number two, if the residents would be elderly citizens, how much maintenance of the property, such as lawn care or snow shoveling, are they expected to do? Or is the property management totally responsible for those kind of tasks? Number three, the number of residents at the property. We were told that they expect one person per unit, but is there actually a number limit? And just new information again, we just found out that there is possibility of caregivers at those, living in those properties as well, and is it going to be one or possibly two or even more? We don't know, right? And is there restrictions on how long the visitors, if, if they're temporary visitors, how long they can stay? Number four, parking and traffic. Would there be adequate arrangements for parking space and increased traffic to avoid disruptions to this area, given that we, the new, you know, increased number of people and the density of that property? So those are our concerns. We just like to say we're not against obviously senior housing, as we didn't even know in the beginning, so those are our concerns, and hopefully we'll get addressed. Thank you.
Okay, my apologies to you. The list had you as William Bleed. I guess your name is Wilson Lee, is it?
No.
Oh, it's Wilson.
Wilson Lee's my father. He's the owner of the property, but he can make it today.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions?
Questions to answer.
Sure, as soon as you push the button, no one to push the button.
I'm wondering if staff.
Okay, I'm, I'm about to. So Counselor Robinson, go ahead.
I'm wondering if staff might be able to address some of those questions. Do you, do you want the list?
No, I took some notes down. Thank you, Counselor Robinson. Your Worship, just to answer some of the questions raised by the speaker. So the, this project, should it move forward and should second and third reading be granted, it would be brought back for final rezoning and a development permit. And prior to coming back, there would be a number of agreements put in place. One would be an operating agreement by the Bulgarian society with BC Housing. The other would be a housing agreement with the, with the city of Coquitlam to ensure that the occupancy on the site in perpetuity is for occupants of 65 years or older. So typically, those, those housing agreements under the Land Title Act or, or Local Government Act are, provide essentially an agreement between the city and the operator, essentially making sure that the site is a seniors housing site in perpetuity. Should the owner of the property, in cooperation with BC Housing, decide at some point in the future they want to do something different, they could not do that without the express authority of the city. So that is, that does control for, for the city and ensures that the residents, you know, get a project that's a seniors housing project. So that answers question number one. In terms of the elderly, I think the second question was in terms of the Bulgarian society and, and who would, oh, the answer's here. The maintenance, I guess the.
Maintenance, lawn care.
Yeah, the maintenance. So in terms of the maintenance, the, the operator of the property, the Bulgarian society that has the operating agreement, would have to meet standards of BC Housing in terms of how they maintain the property and how they run the site. They would have to deal with maintenance as part of that agreement, and the expectation would be that there would be standards of care and BC Housing oversight on the project. And typically, my experience with, as, working for a city in these agreements, is that we have a fair amount of comfort that BC Housing would be managing that operating agreement to ensure it's, it's, it's run properly. The number of residents on the property, there's going to be seven one-bedroom units. We expect that it'd be either a single occupant or an occupant and a caregiver or, or spouse. Typically, there, there is, there's no actual limit on visitors or people coming to visit those owners, as there would be no limit on any multifamily owner to, to limit the amount of visits that they would have on their property. This is not an extended care facility. It's actually seven individual units, fully self-contained, but they are one-bedroom units of modest size. Parking and traffic, there, there is adequate parking being made on the project that does meet the zoning bylaw. There's eight stalls on the property. Again, that does meet the, the requirement for seven units of this type. There have been requirements put in the project to ensure that the parking is, is split into two different areas to avoid traffic impact on Marmont, so the, the traffic is off of the lane and off of the other side street. So there's some accommodation made to, to try and mitigate parking issues. And there's going to be site improvements, frontage improvements as well on the property. So we do not anticipate that a project with seniors housing would generate a fair amount of onsite resident traffic. There may be some visitors, but in terms of actual resident traffic, would be mitigated by the occupancy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hodge.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I'm glad that the, the resident asked these questions, because they were, there were some that I had. And I don't know if the resident still, I actually had a question for, for Mr. Bleed. I don't know if he's, if he's still here, but I just, yeah, if I, if I could ask you a question, Mr. Lee, yeah, Mr. Lee, because your, your questions, I think, were similar to mine. Thank you, and I appreciate that you've now got more information, because I think there was a lot of sort of angst in the, in the neighborhood. And now that you sort of have an idea that it's, that it's going to be seniors, and it looks like what we think, and we'll, we'll get certainly clarification on, is that the, the maintenance will be done, there'll be, you know, a housing agreement in place so that we won't have to worry about, you know, seven seniors all arguing over whose turn it is to cut the grass.
Right, exactly.
So I presume that there will be an actual, that these things will be taken care of. I'm usually the first to worry about parking, but I, you know, I, I think that, again, there may be, given that we're dealing with seniors here. So I'm just thinking, if you've heard these answers answered to your satisfaction, what is your position? Are you arguing for or against, or are you happy? I mean, obviously, your original concerns that, what it was going to be have been alleviated, and I'm just curious, as someone who lives in the neighborhood, are your fears addressed knowing maintenance and lawn care and the upkeep and, and that? Are they, are you?
Yeah, well, definitely appreciate the response and the new information that was given now. I guess the next concern will be enforcement laws, and for example, basically, some of our concerns is based on the fact that the current owner and how the history of maintaining that property has not been a good track record so far, as that we also mentioned in previous comments. So that's why we are concerned about the future maintenance of the property, given the, you know, increased number of people and the changes.
And I've, I've seen the property. I went by and saw, and I, and I appreciate your concerns, but with an actual agreement in place, there may actually be a better process in place going forward than there is, there is today.
We definitely hope so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Counselor Reed.
Thank you. Through you to staff. Right now, it's a duplex, is that correct?
Yes, Your Worship, that's correct.
And there's only two suites in it?
Your Worship, I can't confirm the number of units on the project. There, it is zoned for duplexes, it's a, it's a two-unit building. I do believe that there are more than two units on the project, which has been part of the concern by residents.
So if there's more than two units on the property and they're not legal units, which is impossible to have in a duplex, they've been renting out suites and gathering the funds, as you may, and just getting away with murder for how long? The, is there going to be an elevator?
No.
Not that one would be required for two stories, but I'm asking.
Your Worship, no, there would not be an elevator on this project.
Okay, because it's for everybody over 65. Is there a ramp at the back? There's no ramp either.
I don't believe there's a ramp on the project.
Okay, so there's just a stairway, two illegal suites, okay. The CMHC agreement should cover most of it, but it's kind of sad to hear that the place hasn't been kept up and that there's illegal suites. My biggest concern is this. When we did the housing choices bylaw, one of the things that we discussed many times is when people come in with these supposed duplexes, that there would be no way they could fix them up and make them into legal fourplexes or threeplexes or up the housing units. It would have to be a total tear down and a redo. So why is this before us?
Hi, Your Worship, that's an excellent point, and I recall every time that Counselor Reed's brought that forward, we are concerned about the, the perception that we're encouraging illegal occupation and then rewarding it through conversion of units.
Exactly.
There are mitigating circumstances on this particular project. It is seniors housing. It is, you know, seven units of affordable seniors housing, and it, so there are certain merits around that that are unique. We don't get agreements with BC Housing for seniors housing very often in locations that are very, very suitable for, for this type of use. So we have looked at that as, as an opportunity to, to try and advance that, that housing type. And that's, that's the key issue here, is to try and advance seniors housing, bona fide seniors housing in the area.
And I believe that this location, it has exactly eight parking spots, so let's hope no one has two cars or you're hoot and there's no place on Marmont to park. And I believe now that our housing choices is through, that to allow this to be refurbished is just setting a terrible precedent. I, I just don't like it. Thank you.
On Counselor Reed's question related to the four units, do we have any indication of when the four units, when it became a four-unit building?
I don't believe we do. I know, we know that the owner of the property, the current owner of the property has owned the property since September 2010, but we, we can't confirm when any additional occupancies were actually put in place. We are aware that the residents are aware of those additional units, and that's part of the concern from the residents on this project.
But, but it's likely that this, this owner didn't establish the two illegal suites, simply as inheriting them from the.
Your Worship, we just can't confirm.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor O'Neill.
Just looking at attachment four, very modest-looking building in terms of, it's not what you normally think of when you think of an apartment building, even a small apartment building, looks very much like a home, a regular sort of house or a couple. And that, that's something about the impact of a building on a neighborhood. I know that some of us get very concerned when there's a, a big building that's quite out of context, towering over them. Do you, are you able to tell me, compare the height of this building to the height of the current duplex that's there? Do we, do we have those figures? It looks to me that it's going to be about the same.
Yes, Sir, Your Worship, it is, it is the same height as is there right now.
Okay, good. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, and Counselor Sikora.
Thank you very much. You're saying that the rent will be approximately $600 per month. What does that mean approximately? You have no subfigures or roughly?
Hi, Your Worship, those are, those are rough ballpark figures. It'd be up to BC Housing to just set the final rents, depending on, on their, their operating agreement and their, their, their standards. They would advise us what that is, but they've told us it's around $600.
So, so there'll be seven one-bedroom units?
Yes.
When looking at the picture, it looks very, very nice, but I, you know, that land is not that big. This appears like it's about one acre.
In fact, the, the site is fairly sizable. The actual, Your Worship, the, the size of the, of the property, the actual size of the building is, is less than what would be the case if the site were redeveloped under RT1 or RT3. So that's, that's another, some of the other mitigating factors around why reusing this building, you know, while we're not encouraging it, certainly when there's occupancies that we may be aware of, certainly in this case, it made sense to, to try and accommodate what would otherwise be maybe a larger impact of these kind of units. In this case, they're reusing the building that has a lower density and lot coverage than would be the case under two other zones that would fit within this designation.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine Wong at 1066 Walls Avenue, and she'll be followed by Julia De Charle.
My name is Mayor. Counselors, city staff, and the public. I'm living on Walls Avenue, 1066, for about 10 years. I would like to explain my concern about this rezoning plan. As some, I have some experience during these past years, that we feel, we're not sure about the plan for us in the area. That's why we, and then it was a quick decision within, we received the letter within three weeks, we have to submit our concerns about it. And we tried to find out more information about what's the plan is. We were told it was rezoning for affordable housing, didn't really mention about senior housing. And then we were worried about, because recently and from the past, the police car came quite often, at least three, four times a year. There were something like drug dealing business there, because I was living right, right across. People with mobile homes staying there for days. Extra people went in, and the strange guys came in and out quite often sometime until police came. And one time, I noticed that the landlord was having a fight with the tenant, and the police had to come, come too. And my neighbor, he always has to go over to pull the dandelion out, because it's rather wrong, and he's very likely want to make the neighborhood clean, so he doesn't mind to spend hours. And like last September, not last, just a few months ago, the forensic group and police were there again, but we still don't know what happened. So if for, we as neighbor, we don't know what happened in the future, so I don't know if you live in that neighborhood, how do you feel about it? And like for now, it's saying with the BC funding, we just realized it lately. When the time when we were at the open house, we were told it can be for 15 years. When the time when we were at the open house, we were told it can be for 15 to 55-year-old people. So by that time, October, we realized something more because even one of our senior neighbor, she wants to phone to City Hall to ask about for more information because they've been living there for years and they want to live it, live in the peaceful environment. They don't even get, they just get brief information, nothing really much that we can know about it. So with all these kind of questions, how can we say yes before we know about the plan? And like on the newspaper, The Now, that's shown on November 21st, I feel upset and angry about the comments because honestly, our neighborhood, we didn't really know at all about senior, and they put the comments like we discriminate senior. I am absolutely unhappy with this kind of misleading to our readers and our tri-city residents because senior, we like them, I respect them. In Chinese, we say if we have one senior at home, we have three treasures. We know that we learn a lot from them. I do volunteer in community, in church. I respect them a lot. I learned from them a lot. Why can we make these comments to discriminate them, to say them over-65 low-income senior will increase crime in the neighborhood? This is totally misleading people about our neighborhood, make people think we are the mean neighborhood. For me, I don't really like, until recently, October, I know that they are going to be a senior people's home. It's comfortable for me, but for my concern is our neighborhood and the location is a midway of the hill. It's kind of dangerous for them. I do have to shuffle the snow a lot because we are by the main street, but the snow power people, they don't come into our small street to do the snow power work. So it's kind of slippery over there. If we do have it over in our area, I hope, I do hope, we have to do well-equipped, equipped for that and more facility to accommodate them. The crime increase that we're concerned about is some people that might notice this senior apartments over there, the scam people gonna come more often, and we have to educate the senior to be more aware about that because the scamming people, they always keep coming. They come at the midnight. I used to turn on the light to let people know their number, address when they find the road, but now I have to turn it off because I noticed the people always come late midnight, they're not on the door making stories. It's tall guy that they always make stories to ask for money. So that's the time that we explain about it. It's not about, totally not about senior people. I hope everybody can understand this. And I, it looks like it's gonna be goal for this program because actually everywhere, affordable housing is necessary, but by the meantime, we have to think it has to be a suitable location and more amendment of facilities that can cope with this kind of housing to make them believe in the good way. And everybody would like to live in a peaceful environment, so I hope everybody will understand that. What we worry about is not about discrimination about the seniors, it's about the facilities, just in case it make it go. And Ms. Robinson, thank you for visiting our street, to look at the truth, to understand us, to listen to the voice and observe the environment. And I hope that will be a suitable decision from everybody and because this is my concern about the neighborhood as well, and most of the people, they are more concerned about what is it going on because we didn't, by May, we only have three weeks to make the decision to send in our comments or concern. So it's a bit short, we didn't receive enough information about that. And about the maintenance as well, because senior, I was told that, oh, if they live there, they would take care of their home, but for me, I feel concerned that, I feel bad if they have to come to do the snow power or they do the cutting, the lawn cutting or some other thing. It should be the management that how can we enforce them? They would do a good work because honestly, for the past 10 years, we didn't have a peaceful environment. It's all related to that house. Thank you for everybody, for the time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wong. If you could stay there, I think there's a couple of questions from people. If you could stay there, please? Please? Okay, sorry. I did want to ask you a question, and first of all, I want to thank you for coming. There was a wide variety, and you've read some comments in the newspaper, and I think council members, including myself, have expressed frustration or concerns about some of the comments, because we did get a wide variety of comments about them. And some of them were about specific examples in the past, some of them were about sidewalk issues and those sorts of things, and some of them were all density. So there was a wide variety. Some of them are, in some people's perspectives, perfectly legitimate concerns, and some of them fell in a different category and were subject to criticism. Now that you understand more, and I don't know how the information was disseminated by the society to the neighbors, but now that you understand more, I recognize that there's been a lot of problems with the existing tenants. Would you, are you supportive then of the move to a different kind of project like what's proposed here, or I, there's lots of options here. I don't know what you would support at this point, now that you have more information?
Um.
I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand this because.
Yeah, because like, I don't mind it senior housing, but I noticed there's some people that staring at this plan because some people, they might consider thinking like what Mr. Lee was thinking, that like I do have the same concern, just in case people make use of the name for senior housing. And after some time, they say, oh, we cannot afford for it because it's affordable, we cannot maintain the balance of financial issue, then they might probably, probably want to change it into the other purpose for more commercial or investment concern. I do notice there was a guy was saying something, oh, I can think about this plan, it looks like it's a good investment, convert it into like something like the homestay, whatever, that it's all rooms that multiply the units, that he can make more money. So personally.
And the proposal that's before us now would prohibit that. That isn't a possibility, that there is, would be a housing agreement in place and you couldn't change from that. So I, and I don't know if staff can give more reassurance on that point, because I think we're gonna get repeated comments about that issue, about what this could ultimately end up as. Can we satisfy everyone, or is there still some question?
Your Worship, I think we can satisfy the comments that have been presented. Over the life of this project, it did start as affordable housing of some form for the Bulgarian society, and it evolved to seniors' housing, so I note the comments and concerns from the speaker. Thank you for those. I don't think there was any sense of misleading the public. I think it evolved from what was essentially a Bulgarian society project, and it ended up into an affordable seniors' project. This project, to get funding from B.C. Housing, the Bulgarian society is going to get into an operating agreement with B.C. Housing, and that operating agreement will require them to manage the site in a careful way, and we're quite prepared to have B.C. Housing put a draft of that agreement to us, and we can discuss that with the residents if they so wish, if there's a question around what that would include. With the city as well, there would be a housing agreement which would restrict the occupancy of these units to seniors. Okay? So that's 65 years and over. And that is by agreement, it is a legal agreement, and it cannot be violated by B.C. Housing or by the society that runs the housing project without the consent of the city. And the city would be quite, quite well aware that the proposal made to the community and the city is for seniors' housing, and that's what we would want to have that in perpetuity. So we do feel we could satisfy the concerns from the community.
Yeah, until October, we realized that it's gonna be a senior housing. So I don't really reject it, but because the locations got heavily there, so I hope before it go past, it has to be enforced with some kind of facilities. It is suitable and good for the senior, if just in case they move in. I don't want to see the ambulance come all the time because they fall from the stair or this kind of snow is slippery over there because I slip at the bus stop. The bus stop is convenient for them, but in the winter, it's so, even though my neighbor was so hardworking, always cleaning up, but it's still slippery. So that is the risk that around that area, that we still have some kind of risk for them, that we should have some good facility for them. Thank you for everybody.
Thank you. If you'd stay there. Counselor Hodge.
Thank you, and I appreciate you coming tonight.
After, you know, what was written in the paper and to come and set the record straight. And my question was gonna be similar to what the mayor asked, is that now that you have the information, this is really why we have public hearings and forums like this, is so that everybody does get a chance to get the factual information to make a decision, and that's something we're gonna have to do later tonight as councilors. But you, as a resident, your opinion is important to us, and so that's why I just wanted to clarify, now that you have the information, and given that, you know, that it sounds like you have had some difficult times in this, around this property, but the opportunity to move forward to a different tenant and an agreement to look after the landscaping, and I have no doubt that if B.C. Housing's involved, that it will be certainly better than it is, and I look forward to seeing a copy of the housing, the agreement. But given this new information, as a resident, I just want to know if you're speaking in favor now or if you're still opposed.
Oh, well, I have to see how they will make the facilities over there because like, I'm more convinced to be agree with it, but for me, I'm still worried about that, how much facility will be for them, because I don't want to see the dangers for the seniors.
No, and I appreciate your concern for them.
Yeah, so it is like, it has to be well-equipped for that because this looks like in our neighborhood, this is the first how they converted into this kind of housing. And what about if, like, I have more information, then I think probably I can tell you how I feel about that, but at least I would like to express my concern is senior housing is not that terrible like what the paper said to us. This is something important I want to declare. Our neighborhood didn't really do any discrimination there. This is misleading people, they just put words together in proper, in the proper way and make people feel we are mean neighborhood. I am very upset about that, the bad writing. That's all I feel about it.
Thank you for coming to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Neill.
I think all my questions have been answered, and with the last two comments and questions from the mayor and Counselor Hodge. So I'm just, yeah, I think it's clear that, for anyway, with this speaker anyway, that, oh, actually, that's not a question, and I don't want to make a final comment here. Thank you.
Counselor Sikora.
Thank you very much. I was gonna tell the Mrs. Wong, that, you know, after 40 years in public life, I came to believe only, I believe, 50% of what I hear and only 50% of what I read. Okay? Thank you.
That was, that was a question, I guess. Okay. Counselor Reed.
Thank you. Through to Mr. McIntyre. So when this came in, it doesn't need any variances or anything, you just accepted it, that they were just going to refurbish this property like we said we never do under the housing choices, and so there doesn't need to be any special amendments or anything else done to rezone? Because I'll tell you, if this goes through, you can expect a lineup tomorrow.
So, yes, thank you, Your Worship. This is not a housing choices application, so I should just off the bat, we didn't know that it was a duplex and that eventually we learned that there was some additional occupancies, but this is not a.
You didn't know it was a duplex?
No, not in, no, we knew it was a duplex. We didn't know there was additional occupancies until as the process continued and we got, we received information from residents as the process continued. This is not a housing choices project, it's actually being red designated to a different zone.
I'm watching how you've done it.
So we have separated it from the housing choices palette, if you will.
Because it couldn't be done under housing choices.
And because of its uniqueness, it is a very unique project, because of the seniors' housing that is being proposed, and because it is, it could not be done under the.
Housing choices.
Housing choices.
So this is opening the floodgates. Thank you.
We wanted to editorialize this point, but why don't we go with, okay. The next speaker is Julia Dejarlet at 1061 Thomas.
I didn't bring my other glasses, so if I don't have my glasses on, then I can't see you. Good evening, Mayor Richard Stewart, councilors and city staff and the residents of Coquettlin. Some points I stated in my letter of May 22, 2012 for the public consultation regarding 352 to 354 Marmont Street, attachment six, which you've probably already seen. And one of the points is, it doesn't matter if you are a society owner or a private owner of a property, you should respect the surrounding area zoning. And I mentioned about the garbage at times being all over the place because before, many years ago, you can put more than two garbage cans out. So there was a lot of garbage and overflowing bins, the grass not being cut. And as of that letter that I wrote in May, they did take off, they took out the boxes that were in front of the building that were piled up high under the front porch, which I thought caused a fire hazard or rats. I received a letter from the Bulgarian society to go to the information open house, and at the open house, there was architect and the two owners. They noted that not many people went to this information open house. I asked why the tenants at 352 and 354 did not receive the letter for the open house. One of the owners said that they were not important. I asked if they'd done this type of housing project before. They said yes in New Westminster, but I didn't really ask if it was a B.C. housing project. I asked what age you consider seniors to these men of the B.C. Society, Bulgarian society, and their reply was 50 to 55. I asked about the office that was on the architect's plan, if there was gonna be someone there daily to supervise the tenants, like a property manager. They said no, they would only use the office for storage of papers and stuff, and there will be no property manager on site. The society, as I know, the address is in Chilowack, so that would be a long ways for them to come in an emergency. They noted, and I also noted that the trees in the lane, they noted that the trees in the lane will be removed for the parking. They said that the making of the smaller units would have less people per unit, and they've only been owners for a year and a half. I noticed that not many exits on the building and the, like May Reed said about the ramp for senior housing right now and things like that. The fencing should be put in place if you are gonna have seniors living there. Yes, the city of Coquettlin wants to increase density, but there are no apartments within actually five blocks or more, and is there, is that what the city's plan to do, to have larger homes converted to apartments? And there's a bus stop within 150 feet. As an apartment zoning, there would be probably, I don't know, a business license involved in this, a fire safety plan? Is there gonna be a dumpster, or are they just gonna have regular garbage cans? And turning left from the lane to go into Marmont would probably be a nightmare, and maybe there should be a no-left lane onto Marmont from the lane. And also, is B.C. Housing gonna be subsidizing the rent, or are they gonna be also helping in the renovation of this project? That's what I'm unclear about because my father has an apartment building on Ridgeway, and we have a couple of tenants in the past that have subsidized through B.C. Housing, and we have lowered their rent so that they can live there among, because of the shops and everything that are in the area. So you don't have to have a special apartment for seniors to live in, and it goes by there also the amount of money that they make per year to qualify for B.C. Housing. This fourplex that I've stated has been ever since I've lived in the area, so 15 years or so. There are other duplexes in the area that are fourplexes, just to let you guys know. And like May Reed said, under the housing choices, I don't know if the planning department can bring up the map of the existing land use and the preferred land use. It's one family residential in the light brown neighborhood, and then in the preferred land use, they're all light brown, which is neighborhood-attached residential. Mainly the low and medium-density apartments are in the surrounding areas closer to shops. And do they actually know what is the square footage of these suites? That's a question. And under the RM1, there's no minimum amounts of units, but there is a density amount, but I guess maybe this doesn't qualify. density amount. But I guess maybe this doesn't qualify because of the B.C. housing thing. I'm not sure. I want to know about that. That's about it. Thank you.
And we're going to try and get answers to all of those. I think staff were making notes of all those questions. Mr. Alueva.
I picked up a few of the questions, maybe starting from the latest question. This project does meet the density under RM1, so there's no issue in terms of the total site density. Each unit is around 500 square feet. As an apartment, it would be required to, they're going to do a whole conversion of the project. There'd be common corridors, and there would typically be common garbage as an apartment, typically, although we don't have all of the specific details on the plan. Yes, we are aware there was a space for an office, some administration, in the event that there could be some very infrequent, potentially, support for residents that were there from time to time, but there is no intent to have a full-time caregiver on the project. I'm sorry, any questions I missed?
So they won't have like a big dumpster, we hope?
They likely will have a common, common garbage area. With seven units, typically, you may not need a dumpster. You may have a couple of larger bins. We would look to more the detailed plan when that's developed at the development permit stage, determine what kind of garbage facilities might be provided. And we can certainly provide information at that time.
So under the apartment zone, but because it's a seniors', would it be the city of Coquitlam garbage pickup, or would it be a different company picking it up?
Mr. Suzak is the general manager of Engineering and Public Works.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Generally speaking, certainly STRADA units have their solid waste contracted to whichever provider. On top of mind, I just, I just don't have in my head what the situation is with straight apartment or straight rental units. I'm not entirely sure. My suspicion is that they would be treated very similarly to STRADA units, though. That is, it would be their choice. If they wished to be on the city's system, we can provide the service, but we don't mandate that they have to be. They can go to a private contractor if they wish.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I'll explain the process. We're at zoning now, and that establishes the land use, whether or not this is an appropriate land use. There's a process after this. If it gets a zoning, then it has to go through a development permit process where the colors and the shapes of things and all of that design work gets done, including the garbage collection system, the parking, and those sorts of elements. A lot of it is included in the documents we have here, but some of it isn't, hasn't been determined yet.
Okay. And I guess you want to know if I approve it or not?
Well, I'll be blunt here. There were, as we read through these documents, some of them offended some of us, including me. Some of the comments about, by some people. That doesn't mean that everyone that's here tonight has to defend themselves, because there were a lot of comments, were just legitimate concerns about whatever.
Yeah, we got information a little bit.
But there were a couple of the comments that did have some people concerned, including myself. Now that there's more information, I do want to know whether in fact people have, what concerns are left, if there are any, and whether or not support, whether or not you support it, or you still have concerns about something. So yes.
I'll find out if this other place that these society have in New West, if it's, you know, I don't know how I'll find out, but I'll find out where this New West place is, to, you know, learn more about it, which I should have done probably in the last few months. But like other speakers said, if this passes, how we know, you know, of course, other ones are going to come up too, but they're going to have to have, you know, senior citizens or something converted, these homes converted into, you know, these units.
Yep.
Right? Because, you know, there is a lot of duplexes in the area, so. And they're the older ones. Like, this is an older one. Like Mae Reed said, that, you know, the city stopped from the new duplexes, converting them, and they have to be regotted and stuff. But these older ones that are, say they're duplex, they're really fourplexes, but the city doesn't know. And they're easy to be converted into so many units.
Yep.
Because they're just a square box.
Understood.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And Counselor Robinson.
And Merry Christmas to all.
Just a second.
Actually, I just have a question for staff.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Julie. My question for staff is, so if this project does not get approved, then I am assuming it just stays a status quo?
Your Worship, probably more complicated question than it appears. Yes, if the project doesn't get approved, the current zoning is, remains. And yes, it's status quo.
And it's possible that nothing will change?
It is possible that nothing will change on the property.
Thank you.
You. Counselor O'Neill.
Yeah, just in the matter of the communication and the news stories that came out a few weeks ago, and it even made the National Post. And the headline was, "Residents Fear Proposed Seniors' Housing Project Will Increase Crime." You know, on the surface of that, that's like, oh, these stupid residents. Why would they think that seniors' housing could increase crime? And I think this was an unfortunate coming together of old information, information from the residents who didn't know it was seniors' housing, being concerned that low-income housing would, for better for worse, would lead to crime. And, you know, we can debate that, whether that's a rational fear or not. But when this comes to our table, we know it's supposed to be seniors' housing, and we see these comments about, the opposition comments about being opposed, they're opposed to it because of the crime fear. And this all goes together quite unfortunately, I think. And I think it was too bad the way that came together. Because I don't think there's, I don't think, I don't recall hearing anybody.
We will have a debate in a minute.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it came up, and you dealt with it as well, Your Worship.
I did, yes.
And I wanted to elaborate on it a little more, that it, so that was an unfortunate occurrence. And we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. And that's the end of the speakers list. I'm going to assume there are other speakers to this item. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward. You'll have to give your name and address for the record. And you have up to five minutes.
Hello, my name is Anna Trong. I am from New Westminster. I am the housing manager at Seniors Services Society. And do you need my home address?
Any address.
I'll give you my office address. It's 750 Carnarvon Street in New Westminster.
Thank you.
Although we are based in New Westminster, we do provide services to the tri-cities and throughout the lower mainland. I wanted to tell two stories. Well, a quick synopsis where they have clients that we're serving today. Currently, we have a senior owner caseload who's living with her family in a one-bedroom unit. There's five of them. She's from Coquitlam. When there's chaos in the family, she flees to a transition home. She cannot afford housing on her own. We also have another senior who's paying $850 in rent. Her income is $1,100. She does not qualify for the SAFER subsidy program through B.C. Housing at the moment. She does not have a phone, because she can't afford one. So those are kind of the stories of the seniors who are in need. So I just wanted to clarify that these seniors are unlikely to commit crime. And I'm glad to hear that there's a lot of clarification now around the whole crime piece, and that this project is for seniors. And I wanted to address the parking. A lot of the low-income seniors do not drive because they cannot afford to, or because due to health issues, they can't drive. So it's really important that their housing gets placed close to amenities, bus stops, and medical offices. And this particular building seems to meet those criteria. In terms of density, the current building right now has five bedrooms. Seven units of housing would mean seven bedrooms, which would mean an increased density of only two more residents. Maintenance. Yes, this is going to be a B.C. housing project, and that's great. B.C. housing does great work in maintaining the yard, the grounds, and it's all done professionally. So I hope that the residents of the neighborhood will feel more at ease with that news. In terms of the age of seniors, I heard there was some confusion in the crowd about this. So generally, under the housing continuum, seniors is defined 55 or close to with a disability. But from what I've found from Bulgarian Housing Society, is that they are going to reserve this particular project for those 65 and up. So I just wanted to declare that that's what I found in my own research. And then I also heard some concerns around the size of the units and how this particular existing building can accommodate seven units. The current building is just under 5,000 square feet, 4,880 square feet, to be exact. I did pull out the MLS listing that I found. So subsidized housing for one bedroom tends to be about 500 square feet. It ranges from 450 to about 550. So at seven units, 500 square feet per unit, you're looking at only 3,500 square feet. And the existing building have 4,800 square feet to work with. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I feel the building can be converted into seven units of housing without changing the structure of the building too much in terms of the size. That's all I had to say tonight, and so thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Okay, please come forward.
Well, it's Al Harms. I live in Coquitlam. And I've just gone through the painful process of reducing a fourplex to a duplex, and therefore, there are now four bedrooms going begging for people to live in them, because the existing tenants were quite happy, the two upstairs tenants were really quite happy. So I'm really surprised that this idea of having seven units in there has come up in front of council, and when four weren't acceptable in a duplex. Now, I've really, I haven't really heard whether these apartments, do they have cooking facilities, or are they just rooms, or what are they? What are they going to contain? Are they-
I believe, I believe they're units by the building code, which requires kitchen and bathroom. But I'll ask Mr. Alueva.
Yes, Your Worship. They are fully self-contained units, a full unit. They'd be one-bedroom unit, but they'd be the full one-bedroom unit.
They will have stoves and-
Yes, the full.
Finks and so on?
Yes, yes.
That's interesting, because I just removed mine.
Yeah, You Worship-
I think you are right, Counselor Reed, that it will start, it will want me to come in and say, hey, I want four units, extra units of seniors' residence. That suits me really well, $600 apiece, which is $600 more than what I'm getting now, which is zero.
They're applying for the zoning ahead of time, though. Counselor Hodge.
So, yeah, this, and certainly, as I started to read through this, a scenario like this was one of the things that came to mind. And I'm just wondering, the process we're going through here to, I won't, for lack of another word, legitimize or change, we've learned that there's now four units in there, but the process that they will go through at the development permit stage, well, first of all, they're applying for a zoning that would allow more than two families in a duplex. And this is an option for others if they meet the criteria, and they, you know, we've been saying this to people that apply for a zoning, rezone, if you want to have more than two people in a duplex, you can apply for that. So this is the, this process we're seeing it play out tonight. But also, there's more than just a zoning application. When they go to the development permit, they would, just as somebody putting in a secondary suite, I would imagine there will be major renovations, code, things that will have to be done, possibly electrical. So this is not just as easy as getting a stamp on a zoning approval. There will be things that will have to take, to take place. Is that correct?
Yes, Your Worship. This is in fact also an OCP amendment. So it's in addition to what would normally be the case in a neighborhood attached residential designated area. This is an OCP amendment to redesignate to low-density apartment, to achieve a density which would not otherwise be permitted under the neighborhood attached residential. Yes, there would also be a development permit that comes before council, whereas neighborhood attached residential would be typically delegated through a staff process. In this particular case, there is a number of agreements we're putting on, on the project as well. And there will be a building permit process, which will require substantial building permit changes to the site. So there are a fair number of controls on this project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I want to refer a minute to Mr. Harms, Harms, I think, his concerns, given his situation. Was he given the opportunity to seek a rezoning on his property so that he could legitimately have, increase the number of units in his property? Was that an opportunity presented to him?
I'm advised by our staff, Your Worship, we did have a meeting with the speaker, discussed the neighborhood attached residential program, but there was no follow-up. We're not sure that the specific concerns that were raised by, and whether those, those did not come back to the city for further evaluation.
So if anyone, you know, has, is looking to increase in certain areas, the number of units, that this process is open and available to them, should they choose to seek it out, much like this society has done with us right now?
Yes.
So that's available to anyone who is interested?
We, the city takes in inquiries on neighborhood attached residential designated properties fairly frequently. Some meet the requirements, some do not. There's a lot of discussion around what each individual property may or may not be able to sustain. There are questions around existing occupancies, what the size of the lot is, what the existing property looks like, what their potential is, triplex, quadrplex, subdivision. There's a lot of discussions with many individual owners. And our staff work with each individual owner to describe what constraints that particular property may have. Nothing prevents a property owner from actually seeking an OCP amendment. In a case like the Bulgarian society, it is a large lot, and it does, they are proposing an OCP amendment, which is actually separate than the neighborhood attached residential program. And because of the seniors' housing being proposed in partnership with B.C. Housing, it was a very unique proposal. But other proposals within NAR are scrutinized under the NAR program.
Right.
And if there were issues with the occupancies, those would be discussed with the owner at that time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zaccora.
Thank you very much. But I wonder if the, is the owner of that property here? The developer, or the owner of the property as it is today? Is he here?
It's a society. I don't-
Well, who's representing the society?
I believe that the Bulgarian society is here, Your Worship.
I'll have to ask some questions of the people that do have that property. Okay?
Well, we certainly can invite him if he wishes to speak. We don't, we can't compel witnesses, but, so, and it might be that he'll take this.
I think it'd be better for them to be here, or to be able to answer some questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harms, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I did follow up on it. I did have that meeting, and I, it sounded like changing it to zoning RT1 would be simply a formality. But when I actually submitted a request for zoning change, it was just, it took 10 minutes, and I was simply told it's impossible. And so I, at that point, just continued it, and have now, at considerably expense, converted it to a duplex. But for some reason, even though there are duplexes on that lot, I don't want to change this into my problem, but it's just to show it as an example of what other people have had to deal with in relation to, and why I'm surprised that there is suddenly possibility of having seven units, and where I couldn't get two or four.
Mr. Harms, can I ask a couple of questions about, because the situation you had was a, you had four units. It was legally only two, and you've now reduced it to two, have you? It's now completed?
I'm sorry.
That process of reducing it back to two is finished? That you're now back to two units?
Yes.
Okay. What, could I ask you what the rents were before you did that? The rents for the upper units and the rents for the lower units?
Well, they were split around, average 12 up for the upper ones, and 825 for the lower ones. That included two bedrooms, about 900 plus square feet, and laundry facilities, and joint, shared laundry facilities on each side.
That's helpful, because I'm trying to compare that to the rent that's going to be garnered out of this seven-unit building. It's about the same rent.
Still not too affordable, but I really question the 600, whether that's, that's a doable thing because of the cost of renovating it. I just spent $4,000 on just fixing up the existing accommodation of one apartment.
Understood. Understood. Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Ms. Burby.
I'm Marilyn Craig. I live at 1803 View Street, and I'm with the Tri-Cities Homelessness and Housing Task Group. I just wanted to make three points. I realize that the issue about crime and seniors has probably been answered, but just in case, I have statistics from StatsCan. And although your intuition would be that seniors are a low-crime group, you can in fact show by statistics that they are the lowest crime group. In fact, children under 12 are more likely to commit crimes. This will actually, this complex will make the neighborhood safer. There are already existing rental units within the houses. Anyone renting here will, one, have to be a senior and have to be subject to a stringent housing agreement, which is, puts a lot more conditions on them than anyone already renting in the area. And because it's low income, there'll be less turnover of occupants because of the affordable nature of this, this building. I want to stress, these are seniors who are low-income. These are a vulnerable group of people who deserve our respect as seniors in our community and our support as people who are low-income. This particular area is excellent because it provides access to groceries and services and even more importantly, for people who are low-income, the share of food bank depot at Como Lake United Church. So the Homelessness and Housing Task Group encourages you to consider and accept this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize, I put my glasses on. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dimitri. I live at 1178 Heffley Crescent. So one of the things I want to stress is the importance of affordable housing. Now, I think we all know that we have an aging population, so there will be more seniors who need affordable housing. So there will be a higher demand for that. And one of my issues is, being in the younger generation, if we do not create affordable housing opportunities now, that will leave a burden for my generation to create affordable housing for our parents and our family. And another reason is why seniors are low-income, so that would be because they don't have jobs or they can't afford, they can't work full-time, or they might not have families to supply them. So that's why we need them to have a place where they can afford to live and work and thrive in the community. Another reason I like to say is it creates a dangerous situation if seniors, low-income seniors, don't have a place to live. Because, you know, I've, I've seen statistics, when seniors don't have a place to live, when they don't have, when they have to pay more for housing, then they might go towards crime or towards doing unnecessary things, which they should not have to do because they've worked hard all their lives, they've been through a lot. So they don't need to stress more at that stage of their life. And as one of the residents said, the current housing there is an issue for the neighborhood. There's been crimes and police and remove it, and when you add affordable housing for seniors, I believe, and what some of the other residents have said, is that would, that would make it a safer neighborhood because seniors don't attract crime, as the stats you just have showed you. And I think it's just common sense that we, the council passes this now. So instead of opening floodgate about something maybe more political, we open the door to more affordable housing in our community so seniors can have a safe place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sikora.
No, thank you, ma'am. You know, I still, I don't know, I know the applicant has applied here for rezoning, and I wonder if the applicant owns the property or is subject to rezoning. I'd love to see the owner of the property. I can ask him a few questions. I think it's very, very important.
Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item?
Your Worship, Counselors, my name is George Shishkov. I'm the secretary of the so-called owner. I don't own anything. I'm just one of the directors. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
He represents the owner?
It...
You're not the owner, you represent the owner?
The owner is the society.
No, I'm the secretary of the society. The society is the legal owner. I'm not the owner.
The society can't stand it.
How many suites is there in that house now?
We bought the building in March 2010. There were four suites.
And you still have the four suites there?
Yes, you have the four suites. Actually, yeah.
Thank you.
That was it?
Yeah.
Oh. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for coming up. I was hoping that you might simply respond to some of the concerns that have been expressed, rather than me trying to list them out in a series of questions. We've heard that the property, through your time of ownership, has not been well-maintained. Can you offer us some level of assurance as to how it will be maintained should this project go forward?
The house already is in a much better shape, and the neighbors can confirm. There was only one unit, which consistently we had problems. It took four months for us to evict those people for many reasons. And that's built that unit. And in the past, I learned from the other tenants that they cuffed people on, I don't know, they weren't good tenants in just one unit. The other, the other three units, those people are there one for five years, other for longer than that. In terms of, there was a question about access for seniors. Yeah, there will be a ramp, which will provide access, future access to the second level of units. In terms of maintenance, we cannot have a caretaker because that was one of the requirements of the CMHC, Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation, and units, which in apartments which are with limited number of units, they don't provide for caretakers. But one of the tenants will be given probably less rent and he'll do some of the duties of a caretaker. His property is not difficult to maintain. It's, I don't see that as a problem, as a problem at all. The people who will live there, they consider that they're home and they will, because they will be, that will be probably their, their last, last home. They will live there and in whatever, in my experience, when you're in a place who consider basically your own because the rent is affordable and you, nobody's going to kick you out, you take good care of everything in that building, yeah.
I believe you're correct. I believe that when people are well-housed, they respect the housing they have.
In terms of traffic again, from the list of people we have in mind, nobody has a vehicle. And those are people with high education who came late in the country and didn't have time to build some substantial, like if you come, you're 45, you come from, doesn't matter, we have some Bulgarians, some Russian people, two nuclear visitors, actually. Again, they arrive here when they were 50-plus, so they couldn't, they were working part-time, so. But what I'm trying to say, the people who, about crime, that's, that's absurd. I mean, that's, we'll, we'll, increase crime or anything, anything like that.
Okay, if I can take you back to maintenance just for a moment?
Maintenance...
Sorry, it's my turn.
Yeah, we are, we are a small society.
Just a moment, just a moment, sir.
No, that's our...
Sir, I want to ask you a question.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I think you're correct. I think that people living there will respect the place they live, they will look after it, they will do the best they can. But it's intended for seniors. Not all seniors are in as good shape as Counselor Sikora and I. So some of them will be challenged in doing some of the maintenance. And what I'm curious about is the level of responsibility. How will, your society is headquartered in Chilowack. I don't know whether that means that you live there. Are there people within your group who will be holding a watching brief, dropping by, keeping an eye on things? How, how will you know before the neighbors do if a problem arises?
The society is based in Burnaby. We are a small society, that's our only project, our only responsibility. So so far, we haven't have any government assistance and we manage to, we don't have any debt or anything like that. So we'll have money to, if that's becomes a necessity, to have outside help to, to help the seniors, you're right, they will need that, that help. But those people, they have their children there, the community will, once those people are together in one place, I don't see any, I don't, I don't foresee any, any, any problem. Again, in any society, things change. Again, we, the present board may not be the same board in 10 years from now, but all the covenants are very strict about maintenance especially, and they have inspections and they can force us to do, think if we're not as good as we think we're going to be. So I don't, I don't foresee any problem personally. The way the architect designed everything, it will be a better property than it's, than it's now by far.
Okay, and it sounds like your expectation is that most of the residents will be Bulgarian, perhaps Russian, you were, people who have come here.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, because our mandate is to provide affordable houses for the elderly and it's the, in the legal documents with this, the home, the CMHC and B.C. Housing, elderly are people over 55. That's why we have that number. We always meant seniors, but to be kind of on a legal ground, we put that, that age, yeah.
Okay, you've introduced another level of confusion for me, because we've heard 65 several times, and you just said 55 as the age limit.
They was from the neighbors, they were saying that in our letter to them and in the open house, we put that we intend to provide affordable houses for the elderly and we consider elderly people over 55. And now, we always, our mandate is that's how it's written even in our constitution, that is why. But we have no problem to have people only over 65, no problem with that.
Okay, and from staff, I understand that is the undertaking? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to Counselor Sikora.
Okay, thank you. No, don't leave, sir. I got a question for you. So you have seven units and they'll all be rented, the seven units?
At the moment, or when we bought the house, there were four units, yeah.
Yeah, but you build seven, you'll have seven rented units.
In the future?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have seven rentable units.
So then you'll be absentee landlord. Am I correct?
Well, the society won't live there.
They won't live there, that's right, that's what I'm asking you. Are you going to have somebody from the society living there?
The society office will be there, so that...
Will be living there?
I may, I may not, I'm not, not sure about that.
You may or you may not?
He doesn't live there.
Yeah, I don't, actually, I'm there at the moment. But again, the society is a legal entity which will manage the building.
It's like telling me that the sun is going to come up in the west. Thank you very much.
That's just rude. Counselor Robinson.
If I would, could just respond to Counselor Sikora's query, because I think I understand what he was, what he was trying to get at. So Share Society, Share Family and Community Services through their housing society, they manage well over 200 units in the Tri-Cities. They don't live at any of the units. They don't live on any of the sites. But as the nonprofit society, they make sure that people meet the requirements, that they, the units are filled, and if there's any issues, the society deals with any of the issues. So the people on site, if I understand how societies operate these units, if there's a concern or an issue, they call somebody at the society, who then has to respond and take care of it. So they're, they are the landlords in that respect. At least that's how Share operated as a housing society.
Thank you. Counselor Hodge.
I just wanted to clarify something. Did I hear you say that you live in the, in the unit now, or one of the four units now?
The unit which was vacated is now empty and I, I'm there at the moment, yeah.
Okay, so you're sort of keeping an eye on things and are you the one, you mentioned earlier that somebody might get a break on the rent, they would be the person who would sort of take the lead, I guess, on the maintenance or be the onsite sort of supervisor? Is that a role that you currently fill right now then yourself?
No, no, I'm just staying there temporarily.
Not on behalf of the society, so you're not responsible for the art of the upkeep right now?
No, I take care of, it's with my wife or whatever is, is needed. We have to throw lots of...
But in the future...
...yardage left from the previous tenant and things like that, yeah.
I guess this will be in the, in the agreement. I'm just sort of curious, because I think one of the things we've heard tonight from the residents is, you know, how it will be maintained and who will do the upkeep. And I guess maybe that will be in the agreement. But I would be concerned if we were relying on one of the tenants to do that. But I guess that will, that will come up, because I've certainly heard that tonight, that there is concern about the grounds and how it will be maintained.
The directors will always be available to alleviate any, any problem, be it of maintenance or of any kind.
Good.
That is what, what we do. Like I said, that's our only project. I mean, it's not going to be seven units. That's probably the smallest apartment building in the, in the nonprofit, in the social housing group of housing.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speaker? Please come forward. Julia Deschardet.
Yeah, Julia Deschardet. $600 per unit, it would be what, 4,200 a month? They still have to pay property taxes, probably property taxes will go up because their assessment will go up if they increase it to seven units. The laundry facilities, they said that at the public open house there, they said there's going to be laundry facility in each unit. And then there's your utilities, you can't tell Hydo to give you cheaper or does B.C. Housing involved in that. And still unanswered questions, who's going to pay for the renovation? Is it the society that's paying for these renovations to this building? Yeah, so I still do not approve of this applicant, because there's a lot of unanswered questions.
Thank you.
And if they've never done this before, I don't know. Yeah, so if they've done this before with B.C. Housing, maybe I would approve it more because they would have more experience with it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward.
I'm Catherine again. Yeah, since I hear different kind of feedback about concern about the senior housing in our area, I feel some of these organizations, they're quite supportive, but because this is something new in our neighborhood, so for... so for me, I feel more comfortable about it. It's because before we have over 30 residents that we set up the so-called petition. It's not really a petition, it's our concern because about the worries. But now I feel more comfortable about it. But I just wonder, how can they enforce this society? Can be doing it in the good partnership in the future? Because like for the maintenance, how long will like... Because they were saying that the BC Housing is going to do the funding for it. So is the BC Housing will be going to be a long-term contract with them? Do they just get one lump sum amount to cover it? Or they have to do it every year? They will review, how do they run it or whatever they can do the enforcement about this? Because it is really quite a long term for this kind of plan of rezoning in our neighborhood. Probably it will be more coming up. It is good to have more affordable housing for seniors, but I will like strongly enforce it. We have to do a better plan for them before we move them in. That is something that let's feel more comfortable. And we will see, it will be a better, nice world than now because they will do the renovation and we will like to see the happy neighborhood and peaceful neighborhood in our future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Councillor Nicholson.
Thank you, your worship. So here I am, breaking new ground for me again. You're about to close the public hearing, probably when I finish talking. And once you do that, we can't receive any new information. The report that came to us when we sent this, gave this first reading and sent it to public hearing, said that there would be a housing agreement. And the housing agreement... Should council support the proposal to proceed to public hearing, staff will bring forward a housing agreement and authorizing bylaw for council consideration at that time. In our upcoming council meeting, we're asked to give second and third reading to the zoning. And presumably that we will then at some later meeting be asked to give fourth reading and have an opportunity at that time to approve the housing agreement. Many of the issues that we've heard from the public tonight can only be quelled through the housing agreement. Who's responsible for what? And so what's that agreement going to say? I can't ask... The housing agreement will come to us, but there it is. You know, it's a bylaw, we either approve it or not. I can read it perhaps before I... Before this comes to fourth reading. But I'm challenged. I don't know how I can support something when some of the reservations that the neighbors have are only dealt with in the presence of the housing agreement, which I thought was going to be before us tonight. But it's not. So I don't know where to go from here. I don't want to close a public hearing when there's another piece of paper that I may want to ask questions about and that may allow some people here to stand up and say, "I'm finally satisfied." They're not able to do that yet. So I'm in your hands, your worship. Do you have a suggestion for me? Or perhaps the deputy city clerk? Sorry, Ms. Law.
Mr. McIntyre. Yes, no, certainly I appreciate the difficult situation the council is in. And it's not unlike a rezoning where there's a, you know, some contention and concern around a project and we give it second and third, then bring it back for DP consideration. Certainly, it's as council's wish and how you wish, want to proceed with this. However, if there are some questions and concerns you have, I would suggest at the time of the bylaw reading of later this evening, you can set those out for staff. You may want to defer on giving it second, third readings at that time to send us away with that direction to try to address those. Typically, the housing agreement, it sort of falls in sequence. You know, you have the comfort of knowing it's gone through a public hearing and the bylaw has, you know, further readings. That sends a signal both to the applicant and agencies that may be involved, such as BC Housing, that it's moving down the track as opposed to still all up in the air. So that's the sort of assurance that they need. If, again, if there are some questions or issues or concerns that council has at bylaw reading time, if you want to send that, you know, give that direction to staff, we can take that away. And with that in mind, when working through the housing agreement, we can try to find ways to address those. Then we report that back to council. And that time, it's again, council's decision whether to give final readings to the bylaw or not.
But my problem remains, your worship, that once we close this hearing, I will not be able to... We can publish the housing agreement in the Tri-City News, but I won't be able to hear from Ms. Dejarle whether or not that housing agreement makes her feel any better. I can't listen to anything she has to say until we have finally dealt with this rezoning, once the public hearing is closed. So I have all kinds of people speaking in favor of this and I respect them. And I have all kinds of neighbors who've expressed themselves as having become satisfied as to a number of their reservations, but still having some out there. I'm very much inclined to go, "Well, I trust our staff and I know the housing agreement and I know BC Housing. So when it all gets here, I guess everything will be fine." But I'm still left going, I don't know how to deal with this because I'm going to be asked at a later council meeting to make a decision, having heard everything that I can hear. And there won't be anything new that I can hear from anybody other than staff presenting me with a housing agreement before I have to make a final decision. Thank you.
I'm going to call a five-minute recess, if I could. Get your questions in. We'll reconvene in a moment.
You want me to jump in and say what I'm prepared to go for?
Yep, I will give some explanation. Rahul will... Oops. Okay. Okay. Thank you for the recess. We will reconvene the public hearing. This is, and I'm going to give a little bit of an explanation as to where we're at now. This application, by all accounts, got off to on the wrong foot, perhaps with some information that wasn't complete and everyone started to get a different understanding. And some people expressed opinions that some others found to be unacceptable. And we ended up with a conflict where perhaps less conflict existed. And that always happens, I suspect, when we have less information than we could have. So what council has been asking for now, and Councillor Nicholson articulated it well, is some information as to what the next steps are. The next steps would be the development, if this gets second and third reading, we would then go forward. That's not the... There's four readings required. If it gets the next step, then staff would be able to sit down with BC Housing and the applicant, the Bulgarian Home Society, and work out what's called a housing agreement and another agreement called a standards of maintenance or a maintenance agreement or operating agreement. And I'm going to ask Mr. Aloueva from our planning department to explain his understanding of what council's expectations are, given council's comments and the comments of the public tonight as to what would be contained in those agreements, the housing agreement and the operating agreement. And that would allow council then to receive that information, because we've asked for it, to receive that information prior to us voting the fourth reading of the zoning, which is a little bit unusual. And then subsequent to that, of course, a development permit is also required because this is subject to a development permit. And that's one extra step where council gets to vote on these agreements. And we also get to ratify the agreements for that matter. So I'll ask Mr. Aloueva to reiterate staff's understanding of what we're looking forward to, looking for as we negotiate an agreement.
Thank you, your worship. In addition to the development permit, which we'll set aside for a minute, is something that still has to come forward as part of the, or in advance of the final reading of the bylaw, should it proceed that far. There were two components that have been discussed today that the community and council, and as indicated in our report, are necessary to ensure the overall occupancy of the project and the maintenance and maintaining a standards of maintenance on the project that is in keeping with what the community expects in this area. So the first item would be the, a housing agreement with the city. It would be between the owner of the property, in this case, the Bulgarian society, and the city. And that would be to restrict the occupancy of this project to 65 years or older. And there is some language separate in these agreements that again allow spouses and caregivers, et cetera. But it is really to deal with strictly the occupancy of this project to a limited age. And that's really to ensure that we have seniors living on this project. That is the limit of the housing agreement with the city. The second component would be for us to oversee the agreement between the Bulgarian society and BC Housing. And that's for the operating agreement that goes along with the funding that is being provided by BC Housing. We would take a look at that agreement and ensure that that agreement, that operating agreement covers standards of maintenance on the property, make sure there's regular upkeep obligations by the Bulgarian society as owners to maintain and upkeep the property in the best standards of care and keeping with the community. And that would be for the outside of the building, regular maintenance of the exterior, the landscaping, driveways. We would note all of the regular requirements that we would normally note as part of an agreement to maintain a property and that a residential property would have to meet as well. That would be the second component. We would ensure that that would be completed. Now, in terms of overall process, we're counselled to grant second and third reading to the bylaw, the rezoning bylaw today, both the rezoning and the OCP amendment bylaw. What would occur is that a housing agreement bylaw and a housing agreement would come forward relatively quickly and probably the next month or so. That agreement would essentially restrict the occupancy of the building. Council would be asked to grant three readings to that bylaw. And then that bylaw would be held, once three readings are held. The second step would be that, once we complete the design of the building, the development permit would be reviewed by staff and the design would be completed. At that point, staff would bring back a package of bylaw amendments, would be the final rezoning bylaw, the final OCP amendment bylaw, the final housing agreement bylaw with the final housing agreement, as well as the development permit. And that would come together to council as a package. And along with that would be showing council what the operating agreement would be like, the one that we, essentially the conditions that we're placing on that today. There's quite a number of pieces to this project, but it's not unlike any other type of these projects in any other municipality. These agreements are necessary to tie the occupancy and the operating. So those are the two steps. I tried to simplify that as best as I could, but any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, I have questions from Councillor Sikora.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good explanation, but however, it still leaves a big void. And the void is this, we give it second, third reading, the housing agreement comes forward, the general public does not see it, okay? Now, we will see it. How do I know how the people that I spoke here tonight feel about that housing agreement? They may have some problems with it. So I mean, how do I get more information? And I know that the council members feel that they can't get any more information. But the way I read the public hearing, the way the law states, and I could be wrong, laws have changed the last few years, that the fact is, you can always talk one-on-one. You cannot talk to two or three people in the same room or same office about the zoning. But I think one-on-one, I don't think that the court would ever rule that that was wrong. But however, you know, maybe the charter has changed, maybe it's illegal, but I don't think it is. But again, I have a problem. How do I talk to the neighborhood about this after the housing agreement? I can't. I can't get no information and neither will they see it. Are they going to be happy with it or not? No, they may not be happy with it. So then, I'm sitting today, no wiser than I would, whether I should support it or not support it. I don't know about the neighborhood. I don't know about the neighborhood. So it still leaves us in the same position. Doesn't matter what we do tonight, or whatever we're going to do in the future, it leaves us, our hands tied. And I think that's it, and I, I don't think...
Well, the same, the, this, we can't really debate it now, but the same situation exists with all of the conditions of the development permit, because we can't go out to the public with the development permit, because we give that reading, we give that fourth reading at the same time as the zoning. So I'm, and, and my understanding of the law, as jurisprudence has established it, is that it would be completely, it would be just as illegal for staff to systematically inform council individually as it would be for council to get that, or not staff to, but for council to get that same information all at once. I mean, of course, I say that you're allowed to circumvent the law by, by reading documents separately in separate rooms or something like that. Perhaps Mr. Aloueva can give us that.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. The concern would be the addition of new information. So I think the discussion today that we're presenting is that the housing agreement will limit the occupancy of the building. The idea is not to add any elements in that housing agreement that would not otherwise be discussed today. The agreement is not intended to be a far-reaching agreement. It's really intended to limit occupancy. It really has one, one purpose. So the, the idea would be that that would be the, the purpose for the, for that agreement, and it, that there would be no change to that. When the housing agreement comes forward for council consideration, that council could consider with that any different than they could, would otherwise have been led to believe. But the, the purpose for that is, as been discussed today at the public hearing, is to limit the occupancy. It is not intended to go beyond, beyond that.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson, who raised the objection.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, I really appreciate your calling a short recess so that I could stand up and take some deep breaths and get a little more oxygen to my brain and...
Did it work?
Yeah. Well, I hope it, I think it did. Counselor Sikora did a great job of explaining exactly the position that I was in when we stood up and stretched for a few minutes. And I guess what I was describing was the uncomfortable position that we're almost always in, because we make decisions, and we make them on the basis of the best information we have and the best judgment that we have as to what the views of our constituents are. So I, on careful consideration, I'm comfortable with you closing the hearing and being faced with making decisions interim and eventually final on the fate of this project, and I'm not prejudging what that decision will be. But I'll make those decisions bearing in mind everything I've heard tonight and the additional knowledge that I will get, that the people in this room, they may be able to see it, but they won't be able to talk to me about it. But I think I have a pretty decent idea of what everybody's concerns are, what everybody's supports are. I'll be able to balance those against the additional information that I see, and I'll be in a position to make the best decision that I can. And if people are unhappy, there's an election in two years. Thank you.
Okay. This is an unusual circumstance in that we've actually, we're actually bending over, trying to find, make sure that concerns are addressed here, and I hope the, the people in the room appreciate, or understand that, not necessarily appreciate, but understand it. And in the, in the spirit of bending over, we're going to have to do this one more time. Are there any other speakers to this item? Second time, are there any other speakers to this item? Third time, final time? Oh, yeah, right. I want you to feel welcome at the moment.
Yeah, but everybody's right. It's all about the housing choices for Millardville, right? When you look at the map, the new housing choices do not show dark brown spots for apartments, you know? But this is a seniors' one, right? So I guess it might be okay. But let's say it wasn't going to be seniors. Are we going to allow that in the housing choices of duplexes that look like these, that can be converted into seven units, right?
Counselor Reed.
It's not part of the housing choices program.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And that's what I am so angry about. I am so angry that the way this just slipped in, surprise, because I have been working on housing choices for three years.
Yeah, because I went to the library.
To make this spectacular.
Yeah.
And now we've opened the door for anything to walk in.
Yeah. That's why I spent an hour at the library today looking over the...
Thank you.
The maps. Okay.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Second time, are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed. Adam Kirk.
Item two is an application to rezone the property at 1408 Austin Avenue, bylaw number 4364-2012.
Good evening, Your Worship and members of council. My name is Chris Javi, development planner for the city of Coquitlam. I'm here tonight to present a rezoning application at 1408 Austin Avenue. This property, this property currently has a single-family home on it, and it is located on the southern side of Austin Avenue, west of Schoolhouse Street. The site is currently zoned RS1, one-family residential, and zoning in the area is predominantly comprised of RS1, one-family residential, with a P2 special institutional and a C1 local commercial zone property nearby. The site is designated neighborhood detached residential in the Austin Heights neighborhood plan, and the adjacent land surrounding the property are also designated neighborhood detached residential. The applicant has applied to rezone the site RT3 triplex and quadruplex residential, which is the corresponding zone to the neighborhood detached residential land use designation in order to construct four detached strata units. Additionally, the applicant has applied for a development variance permit to vary the lot, the minimum required lot width to construct a quadruplex. The lot exceeds the width required to construct a triplex and exceeds the minimum lot area requirements for a triplex and a quadruplex. However, the lot requires a 0.9-meter variance to the minimum lot width in order to facilitate the construction of a quadruplex. Given the variance, staff are there, are recommending second and third readings at this time to bylaw 4364-2012. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one speaker registered, Nina Swan, at 1409 Charland. Ms. Swan.
Mayor Stewart, councilors, my name is Nina Swan, and I reside at 1409 Charland Avenue. Regarding the proposed rezoning of 1408 Austin from RS1 to RT3, we only received the notice about 10 days ago that this was going to happen. So everyone was kind of unprepared for the whole thing, and was a shock to all of us. Anyways, I am a very responsible citizen and have lived in this neighborhood for 43 and a half years, and I am very unhappy with this situation. I will be very disappointed in our elected Coquitlam council if they allow this change in the bylaw to go ahead. Even the variance has been changed to allow this. I am sure that none of the council would want this to happen in their backyard. If the rezoning goes ahead, then two other properties at 1416 Austin and 1420 Austin, which I have been told have been bought by someone who works here in the city hall and which are currently being rented, will also apply for the same type of rezoning. The building, rebuilding of this property will start the steady march of this change down the hill. This rezoning will impact us in the worst possible way, as we live directly behind 1408 Austin. Not only will it clear the area of vegetation, but it will cause many problems for us. When the property is cleared of trees and grass and paving stones laid down in their place, all the rainwater, and you know we have lots of rain here, will not be absorbed, but will instead flow onto the lane and come into our garage, through it, under the door, down the stairs, onto our patio, and into our stairwell, and wind up in our basement. It has happened once before, when our neighbor Kitty Corner across the lane paved part of his driveway. My husband woke up to a very hard downpour and decided to check the basement. Water was coming in from the stairwell. He battled with that water for the next four hours, but the basement still got wet, even though he was using the shop vac, and I may add that he was going through treatment for cancer at the time. Many items got soaked. If he hadn't checked when he did, we would probably have had a foot of water in our basement. If the lot at back is paved, this will be a regular occurrence. Anything we have stored on the garage floor, tools, mowers, fertilizer, will also suffer. I'm also concerned about the parking. I know they are providing seven spots for four houses, but what about visitors? What if the people have two cars in each house, and there's going to be four houses on a very small property? We need the lane directly behind our three-car garage to remain free of all cars, because we need to be able to back out freely and to come and go when we require to do so. The lane is not wide, and when we originally moved into our home, all those years ago, my husband asked for a culvert to be installed across the lane to close the drain, yeah, to close the drainage ditch, so that we could back out and go in freely without worrying about sliding into the ditch, which just about happened, because the ditches at that time were very wide, and there was snow, and there was ice, and the back was starting to slide. If people start to park behind, and they will, we will become prisoners. People do have company, and four houses will have lots of company coming, especially on Friday and Saturday nights. And on holidays like Christmas, the lane will be packed and inaccessible to us and other neighbors. This is not, and I would like to stress the word "not," a good or safe, nor safe situation. Ours is not a straight-through lane with an exit at the end. This lane enters off of Charland, proceeds one lot length, and then makes a sharp 90-degree left turn and proceeds to a dead end. There is a barrier at the end with a humongous drop to the property below. Driving into our lane, you never know if you're going to meet someone coming around the corner towards you. Fortunately, right now, it doesn't happen too often. There is no room for two cars to pass. If this passes, the corner in the lane would become a hazard with the extra traffic. This is a very bad plan for our family-oriented neighborhood. Emergency vehicles, should they be needed, will not be able to get in. So I ask you to please reconsider changing the zoning from RS1 to RT3. Thank you very much, all of you, for your time.
Thank you. And that's all the speakers I have registered. Are there any speakers to this item? Please come forward. Counselor Reed.
Thank you. Through you, Your Worship, to staff, because, and I've asked this question before, but I'll just ask it again. When we're doing these new housing choices, which was supposed to be the prima way to redevelop, although we're trying to do a few, I hope, are we going to be able to put covenants on properties like this where there is a basement space so that there can be no suite? When they get this special zoning, we should be able to register a covenant.
Your Worship, council could certainly direct staff to, as a condition of the zoning on these properties, to put covenants on the property to provide future owners with additional information in addition to the zoning. Yes, that is something that council may direct staff to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Sikora.
Thank you very much. Counselor Reed brings up a good point. Is there going to be basements in these developments? Or we're going to say, no basements allowed?
Counselor, it's in the documents that there are basements, but no exterior entrances to the basement.
No what?
No exterior entrance to the basement.
They're dug in. They're about two-thirds down.
And six months later, a year later, it could be a couple entrances to that basement. That's the problem. I remember years ago, when there always were four complexes like we talked about today, four complexes all over the place from a duplex. Years ago, we eliminated any basements. No basements are allowed in duplexes. All of a sudden, all the duplexes stopped. There was no duplexes being developed. But now, you're, you're opening up the door to have four complexes and six complexes and everything else. That's what you're opening up the door to. Thank you.
Okay. Sir, name an address for the record, please.
Your Worship, council members, my name is Mandev Dollywall. I'm the owner of 1416 and 1420 Austin. So just to make it clear, I am in support of this rezoning development, and I only, I own the properties that are just two doors down from the subject site. From my understanding, you know, I believe this, this property to be a perfect candidate for densification. It's, it's located on an arterial road such as Austin, and it will allow easy access for public transportation for whoever will be purchasing the homes. The commercial area is just located a couple of blocks down the road, which is, you know, it provides amenities which are in walking distance. From my understanding, if we have the parking from the lane in the rear of the property, I think this is going to provide safer access to, to the property as opposed to having a driveway that's located off of Austin, because right now, it gets pretty difficult and dangerous getting cars in and out. So that's, that's one positive thing I, one of the positive things I liked about the, the new design. I know the city has, you know, I, I'm excited to see the city's vision and hard work come to life. I, from my understanding, the city has put in a lot of time and effort into, into the new official community plan and with the housing choices. Another thing I wanted to, to bring up was the, the parking issue. The subject site, the zoning bylaw requires that you have one and a half parking spots for each unit. From the, from the aerial shot that we saw, they actually have one additional parking spot, so we have a total of seven, as opposed to the required six. So I feel that the applicant went above and beyond and is providing an additional parking spot. Closing note, it'd be great to have some creative and affordable housing options for, for young families in this area, so I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, I don't work at the city of Coquitlam, like the previous comment, that owner of 1416 and 1420 work here. I don't.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please come forward.
Evening, Your Worship and councilors. My name is Alan Utuck. I live at 1407 Charland, which is one lot south and west of the subject property. And I'm concerned about the parking, that, the parking problems that we'll have in our lane. At present, all of the south properties on Austin have primary access off of Austin, and this access to the subject's property and probably to all subsequent redevelopment on, on Austin will be, this primary access will be moved to the lane only. And looking through the neighborhood right now, we have, the average, the average house has two cars, or more. And I feel that if you have four detached houses that have roughly 2,000 square feet, you're going to get the same thing. You're going to have eight, eight cars for the four houses, and their visitors, where will they park? There's no parking in the lane. There's no parking on Austin. And it's just too big a, too big a change, too much congestion with that, with it being a fourplex. I'm sure that all of us residents, current residents, would prefer to see a duplex at most, but if it's, if it's zoned for triplex, then that would be more acceptable than a quadruplex. And I think that the, the variance shouldn't be given to, the development variance permit shouldn't be given to this property, because it doesn't fall amongst the rules that you guys set out for, for the official community plan in the first place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Hodge. One moment, please, sir. Sir? 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 One of you could... Counselor Hodge, it might not be for you, but I think Counselor O'Neill's...
Okay. Just to staff, a couple of questions about the lane. I went by and I saw this property from, from Austin and saw the driveways, but I didn't, and I wish I had gone back and looked, you know, actually at the lane here. and I wish I had gone back and looked, you know, actually at the lane here. Because it appears that it's, it is a gravel lane. Is that correct? It's not paved? Is it, is it a standard width? I just wanted to sort of get a little bit of information about where we're going with, at the back here.
It is, Your Worship, it is a packed gravel. It's an older standard lane, substandard lane. The, the goal ultimately is to have that as an eight-meter principal access lane. There'll be asphalt, new asphalt put in as developments proceed on, on the lane. So ultimately, it will be widened out to an eight-meter lane with a six-meter pavement on that.
So eventually, it will be brought up because in the city, we do have places where we have the wide lane and so, so they will, the, if this goes through, the developer of this property would put that section in. So we will do this, just like we do with roads. It will be done section by section. Both sides of the lane are just a half, or how will that work?
Your Worship, typically, they're responsible for their, for, they'd be responsible for adding to the existing lane dedication, so there's going to be some additional dedication. And they would have to have an operational lane section. Typically, it'd have to be more than half the lane, enough to have the pavement put in. Typically, you would leave a meter or meter and a half on the property to the south. They would actually finish that lane, but it'd have to be an operational lane completed by the developer, including full drainage works on the site and on the lane so it's drained properly. And they would then taper the works to ensure that it ties in properly to the adjacent properties to the east and west.
So just so I'm clear, they will, they will pull their, I guess, if they have a fence or whatever, they will pull that back to, to provide their, the additional width on their side. They will pave, but they would pave beyond what would be just the middle of the lane because otherwise, we would end up with just basically an indent. So they will come over, maybe not to the property to the south, but they will come over wide enough to provide a full, full lane without having to do an in to get around. So, so there will be some extra width.
Yes, Your Worship, usually, we have their civil engineer. They take a look at the existing situation, the existing gravel, the pavement, and make sure that we have an operational lane section. It would depend how much is out there and what the distances are. We typically rely on the qualified professional, but the idea would be to have a passable, improved lane to the minimum standard whereby we don't want to put the entire lane to the obligation of this owner, but it'd have to be enough to make it a passable operational lane on this segment.
And like all lanes, of course, there won't be any parking back there, but I see that it looks like, I guess, there are cars parked there now, but they would be considered on the private property, not in the, in the lane right away. I'm just looking at a, at a Google map here, and I do see cars parked in the back, but I'm, I'm assuming that even though they look like they're parallel parked on the, the laneway, they're probably actually in a, in a pullout or something.
Yeah, that's, I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
May I?
Yes, I'd like to hear.
Issues in the past were the garbage collection. Garbage collection is done through the lane, and they've had trouble getting, getting through there at the time that that Google picture was probably taken. Because, because of the width of the vehicle that was trying to get back down. And it's a dead-end lane for, for another thing. Most people right now, they either drive in and back out or back in and drive out. It's very difficult to do a turnaround, like a five-point turn in, in the lane. The, the effect of rezoning that, that stretch of Austin will cause that lane to become a major street. It'll have more traffic than Charland Avenue. If, if the number of houses, the number of dwellings is like what this rezoning wants. And that's unacceptable.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Neill.
Yes. Thank you. I'm glad the council podcast was well addressed.
Counselor O'Neill? I'll give it to you. Go ahead.
Testing? Yeah, there I am. Good. Hi. I'm glad Counselor Hodge asked those questions because I'd, I'd been on the lane a couple of times, and the way you describe it's quite correct, that there's no place to do a U-turn. You've got to do the Y-turn to get out of there. And it's kind of a low-grade lane, and I was wondering if upgrading of the lane was going to take place, and I'm glad to hear that. Now, it's a specific reason I wanted to ask you to stay here was if you have any evidence or experience with, let's say, the current residents of 1408, if and when they have big parties, the people can't park on Austin, they can't park in the lane. Do they park on Charland or Schoolhouse or someplace and then walk along to the house or any of those other houses there with, with that limited access? How do they handle their parties now? And is it going to be any different with four houses than it was with one?
But the chance of, of parties and more visitors increases with four houses compared to one house.
So it's more likely that people will have to, let's say there's one party every weekend instead of one party every month?
Right. We haven't had, we, to my knowledge, I haven't noticed any problems with, with parties and people visiting, but they have access to the rear of the property as well.
So they can put a few extra cars down there? They won't be able to have that?
And they've got a large, they've got a large driveway now in, in front of Austin. They have, most of the properties there have to because they do their turnaround before they get onto the street, onto Austin, on their own property.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Nicholson.
Oh, can I ask another quick, could I ask a question about the culvering?
One moment, please.
Will there be a culvert on either side of the, of the lane? Or just on the one side where the ditch exists right now?
Your Worship, I have a servicing plan, but at the risk of confusing pretty much everybody, I would, I would prefer to share the drawing with the, with the proponent. There's a full, full service work for the, for the, for the lane, as I've mentioned. There, there will be a, a number of catch basins on there, full pavement. I, I can show you the actual servicing drawings if, if you so wish. It's basically the entire lane, as I've mentioned earlier. I think this would meet the, all of city standards. So I would rather sit down with you and go through the details and have you take a look.
This would be done piecemeal, right? It wouldn't be done all at once before this property is developed. It would be done as, as the properties are developed down, down the lane. So this would be over a period of years. And all of these, another question I have is...
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we answer the one that you just asked?
Yeah, so development, improvements to lanes and local roads and many collectors are, do occur through development, and that's how the city builds infrastructure. They are typically piecemeal, although the obligation is on the developer who's developing his, his frontages, to improve those frontages so they become safe and operational to city standards. In this case, they would have to improve edges of their lane towards the properties to the east and west, so they have to taper and feather all the pavement, all the services that all works properly. But it would be effectively his frontage with some additional, just to make sure it all works. And yes, we would have pieces built over time. There, there are cases where multiple projects are being developed concurrently, where the city may apply development-coordinated works to fill in the gaps, but decisions would be made through a capital program if that were the case. That's not that common with lane works. So typically, in lane works of this nature, they would be piecemeal. But there would be obviously an attempt made through the qualified professionals to make sure all the standards are, are met and adhered to.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm still not happy with the fact that the lane becomes, it will become busier than Charland.
Sir, sir, we're actually on the internet, so I wonder if you could step forward to the microphone? If you're going to, if you're going to keep, just be near the microphone so they can hear you at home. Thanks.
Okay, sir.
Go ahead.
Oh, the, the lane will, if all of these properties are developed, to triplexes and quadruplexes, have more dwellings on that lane than Charland Avenue presently has. And so we've got a smaller road, a narrower road than Charland, without sidewalks, with more trap, more potential traffic than Charland has. And I don't see how that can work. But, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item that haven't spoken yet? No. Well, I see that, yes. Well, go ahead.
Excuse me. You asked the other speaker that was just up here whether there were problems with people having parties at 1408, like for the parking.
Yes.
All of those houses now have driveways from Austin. This is not going to be the case when you develop four houses. There'll be no parking. They will have no front driveways. So any parties that are being carried on now at that property, all the people park at the front in their driveway, which is certainly wide enough to take, I'd say, maybe about two together, two together, oh, five, six cars. So that's why there's no problems at the back. Although the people Kitty Corner from us have had parties, and we have not been able to get out of our garage at times. So we know that that has happened, and it is a big problem. Anyways, that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Sir?
Your Worship and fellow councilors, good evening. My name is David Lynn, 916 Finley Street, White Rock, and I'm the designer for this property. And I'll just try to address some, some of the concerns that the neighbor, the neighbors behind, behind the lane has. One, one is the, the drainage issue. I think the cities have addressed the, any potential development on this lot. We have to upgrade the, the street and full engineering on the street and also the lane. And so the, the owners are, be willing to put in the, this extra drainage services on the back lane to prevent any further drainage issue that Mrs. Swan would have. And also, I think the major problem, question is the, the parking issue. I understand that there are going to be new developments along the Austin Avenue, and there's going to be, because there's no access out on Austin anymore, so all the traffic will be on, on the lane. Understand that, and I try to address that issue by providing more parking spaces on, on the site rather than spreading, spilling it out. So I, right now, I provided seven as opposed to require six. But talking to the city staff, I, I could be able to put a, additional two, two parking spaces on the site if I'm allowed tandem parking space on grade. There's no, not a covered tandem parking, but you could, you know, block it off to a room later on. But on grade, this max, I could put in maximum nine to 10, depends on the design, but minimum nine to 10. So it's workable to provide more, more onsite parking, so to alleviate any visitor parking on the lane. And if you, if you go back to the site plan that I, all the parking access through the lane, they are all perpendicular to the lane. So if you have access from the lane, that's the only way to get out is through perpendicular to it. So there's no way to park, park parallel to it. So if I, if I put the parking access that way, so that way, we alleviate any parking along the lane. Because the lane will be used as for access. And in terms of the, the number of cars going through the lane, eventually, if all those lots along Austin are developed, we, every, every, every lot on Austin have to provide, have to dedicate 1.9 meters, which is about a little bit more than six feet, to widen the lane to eight meters. So that would, that's required to, as part of the city plan to allow more, more traffic or easier traffic along the lane. But if, if all the property develop along the lane, if it's just a dead end, I'm not sure if the, the person at the end of the lot, of the lane, if, if more lots can be developed, maybe that, maybe the city would consider opening the lane up to be a through lane rather than a dead-end lane. And I think that would solve quite a few problems for access for all those lots on that block. So I think, I think that's, that's my, I have to say.
Okay. I have, looks like I have questions from Counselor Nicholson and Counselor Hodge. Counselor Nicholson.
I wanted to, to address the drainage issue.
Yeah.
I'm looking at, I guess it's the landscape plan. And I see patio pavers and patio pavers and what looks like little bricks, concrete pavers running all through the place. And then right down by the lane, it says permeable concrete pavers. So I would love to assume that they're all permeable. They're all going to take water and feed it back into the ground?
Yes, that permeable concrete paver is supposed to permeate the, any surface water on the parking lot, on the parking surface. In the, in discussing with the city staff, they prefer to see permeable paving. So one of them is permeable concrete block. There's always also permeable concrete. Asphalt is not permeable, so that's not a lot.
No, I understand, I understand that. It's, there are a whole series of other pavers.
Right.
On the site. Do they also provide a permeable surface?
I think only on the parking areas.
Only on the parking area?
Yes. We could adjust to, if, if council is concerned about water runoff from the walkways, we could always do, do all the permeable.
Well, and frankly, I'd be concerned as well about pooling on the site.
Sure, okay.
I don't, I don't want it in my front yard any more than in my neighbor's backyard.
Sure, that's fine. Yep. Putting permeable concrete block is not a problem for the whole site.
Okay. So I'm, so I'm going to ask staff, is there some measure that we apply to consider the adequacy of stormwater control onsite as it hits the ground, comes off roofs, whatever? Do we, we've had these long discussions about this on Burke Mountain, right? We're going to put in pits and all kinds of things. And we've recently had conversations with somebody about a rock pit. So on this site, is that something that we've looked at? Do we have a level of comfort that there's adequate stormwater control?
Your Worship, on larger projects, there are higher-level stormwater control, larger multifamily projects. With the smaller projects like this, we look at having permeability through the site plan. In this case, there is a fair amount of permeability provided onsite. Actually, we're quite happy with the amount of onsite permeability that's been provided. Then there is storm works on the lane. The storm system connections are all there. So we would control storm, stormwater through the lane, the lane works. So we are comfortable at this level with the, with the proposal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. And Counselor Hodge?
Yeah, I was just intrigued because you mentioned the, the possibility of doing the tandem parking. And I'm looking at the, at the site plan here on Attachment 7. Is, is your suggestion then that, I guess, the spot on the west and the spot on the east, are they the ones that you would, you would lengthen?
Yes, that would, that would be the potential for tandem parking.
And, and I'm curious, and I understand tandem parking, but in an area like here where you've got four units, how would you determine who would have the tandem parking? Would it be done by strata? It doesn't really work for visiting because it's, what if the first person in is visiting house number one, and the second person in is visiting house number two? They almost have to be tied to the same unit in order to, to work.
Yes, if it's tandem parking, it would be tied to one unit. So if, if it's, and then tandem would be tied to one unit each, and then whatever's open on, which are not tandem, they will be assigned, but I don't know how to assign them yet.
And, and what would happen? What would we lose? I'm assuming they'd tuck up beside these two, look like sort of stairways. Is this patio? Are we giving up patio? Are we giving up ground? What would we be giving up to get those two extra spots?
The, the two tenant spaces, I, they would be pushed out to the, the required setback for the parking. It's a dotted line.
Right.
It, because the middle parking space is, that's within the, the regulation with the setback line. So I would push that tandem parking, first tandem parking, back to the setback line, and then, and then the other one would be behind that. So I, in the backyard, I have a lot, more than adequate greens, the open space required. So I could have the tandem parking space in those, those areas and still have the allowable, the minimum, meets the requirement required green space.
Okay. And I guess to staff, how, how would this be dealt with? Would this be at the, at a development stage later that we could address the, the, the design? It's not something we have to do tonight to say contingent on making this modification?
In fact, the, the standard approach with the development permit is that it's actually delegated to staff. So typically, we would ask council to grant second and third reading, and then, I think in this case, the development variance permit has to come back before council, so we could show you the design at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Reamer.
Thank you. My question's been answered. Thanks, Counselor Hodge.
Yeah, I've got a similar concern related to the eighth parking spot. And the eighth, the one that isn't there. Thank you very much. I don't see any other questions. Thank you. Are there any others? Please step forward.
My name is Randy Swan. I live at 1409 Charland Avenue and I would directly cross the lane from the property in question. The proposed changes to 1408 Austin will be a hardship on me. First, there's the parking situation. According to the proposal, there will be seven parking spaces at the rear of this property, effectively turning into one big parking lot. There's no access to parking from Austin, so all residents of these houses will have to park here. This will significantly increase the amount of traffic moving along the lane. Unfortunately, it will be centered behind my yard. Also, since there are seven parking spaces, it means that three of the houses would have two parking spaces and the fourth would only have one. I don't know what a reasonable number of parking spaces is for a homeowner, but I think they'd need at least one for their own car and one for a visitor. So right off the bat, they're one short. This leads me to my next concern. What happens if someone from one of these houses decides to throw a party? Where will the people park? I can see the extra cars trying to park sideways along the parking area. Doing this will cause the cars to extend out onto the lane. My garage is right across the lane from them. This will make it difficult for me to get in and out of my garage at the best and if they stick out too far, I won't have access to my garage at all. Our lane is rather narrow and if they tried parking further along, it'd be a very tight squeeze to try to get by them. I don't think the proposal adequately deals with the parking situation. If the plan goes ahead, it'll cause nothing but grief for all the homeowners that use the lane. The third issue I have has to do with the slope of the property. I live on the downhill side of the lane from it. The proposal has a direct path running from the front of the property to the rear. If there's a heavy downpour or a plumbing incident in any of the four houses, the water will end up running along this path, onto the lane and into my garage. And then from my garage, it's just a short trip to the house. And we have a stairwell to our basement and I can imagine water gushing into the stairwell and flooding the basement. It happened once before when another neighbor had just paved their back driveway. I don't see anything in the proposal that deals with the drainage. They have permeable concrete pavers shown for the parking lot, but that won't stop the water from flowing. Even if the water only makes it into my garage, there will still be plenty of tools and other sundry items that could get wet and damaged. If our garage does have a shallow water trap along the entrance from the lane, it can catch some amount of water, but certainly not as much as what would come from a heavy And it wouldn't be able to handle large volumes of water from the other property. Currently, it drains under the lane, through a pipe and into the ditch on the far side. According to the proposal, the ditch will be covered. This pipe will need to be connected to the culvert or else flooding of our property is guaranteed. My fourth issue has to do with using the lane while construction is going on. Assuming this proposal goes through, how will machinery access the property? Will they access it from Austin or will they use the lane? Our lane does not have, is not paved and with heavy machinery driving over it all the time, it can turn into a mud pit. Just a few years ago, it got so bad you could barely drive over it. Since it's a dead-end lane, garbage trucks have to back all the way in and then work their way back out. And this is what caused the mud pit to form in the first place. Eventually, the city had to come out and reconstruct the lane to fix the problem. There have been large potholes since and I've had to repair them myself. I can only imagine what the heavy construction going back and forth over the lane, it'll cause it to become unusable. Also, since the construction would be on the lot behind my garage, I can see construction vehicles being parked right in the back, making it very difficult for anyone in my family to get in or out. My final issue has to do with the lane itself. Being a dead-end lane, there is only one route the traffic can follow. The lane is accessed from Charland Avenue and has a blind corner on it. Currently, the lane does not see a lot of traffic. Occasionally, you meet up with someone at the corner. One person has to back out of the way for the other person to get by. This is very inconvenient and dangerous to boot. If this proposal goes forward, there'll be a lot more traffic on the lane and in turn it would make a greater chance for collision to occur. Anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's raised a few questions for me. I don't have any for you, but you've raised some, so I'd just want to, it'd be great if we can hear from staff on some of the questions that you raised. Can you tell us, staff, through the staff, if, tell us a bit about the lane. Someone had suggested opening it up at the other end, but then someone said there was a drop-off. Can you just tell us a little bit about the lane and?
Yes, it is a, and you can see up in the screen, it is a one-access lane system. It's a single access. It isn't intended to be opened up in terms of the overall plan. Total amount of density on that, on that lane right now, a single family, there's some potential for some densification, but that lane does come out to Charland, which is a local road. So in other cases, the city has been made aware of where those lanes potentially may be densified and it's going out to larger, larger roads. We do look at that condition. In this case, it has not been identified and I don't believe it's possible to extend that lane.
So the lane can't be open?
It will remain as a one-way system, yes.
So the other question that has to do with some of the construction impacts. So if this wasn't through rezoning, whoever owns this property could just build another single family and construction is construction and it's a pain for everybody and
That's correct.
Nothing we could do about that.
Yes, and typically there's, you know, the city crews work with the contractors to try and mitigate, you know, flagging and try and manage construction on sites, but this would be no different.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for this item? Please come forward.
My name is Griselda Pasto. I am a resident of 1398 Charland Avenue. I'm against this. I've been listening to everybody and I have a question. Allowing this property to become a quadruple, what will stop for future properties not apply for the same amendment to make it bigger? Sorry, I'm very nervous speaking in front of everybody. This will increase the traffic of the alley, the traffic of Charland and the traffic of the schoolhouse at Charland. And we have a school a block in a house on Charland Avenue. That will be putting a lot of stress in that specific corner. There is a lot of kids who are walking right now. They have to cross Austin Avenue, they go to Charland and there is traffic in that. And now you have to walk one block and then Charland is going to be another problem where we have to put, you know, parents there to monitor traffic. We just were dealing with this in Rochester. You know, things have been changed, but something to consider about if this go ahead, what will stop the other properties to do the same thing? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers for this item? Any other speakers for this item? Third and final time, any other speakers for this item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed.
Item three is a text, an application for a text amendment to the city zoning bylaw, bylaw number 4354-2012.
Good evening, once again. I'd like to present a text amendment to the zoning bylaw. The amendment would create a definition for accessory amusement arcades and permit them within the CS1 service commercial zone. They will permit it only when operating in conjunction with movie theaters and indoor children's play centers, token operate it without direct access to the outside and limit it to less than 10% of the overall business size. Staff are recommending second, third and fourth and final readings to bylaw 4354-2012. Thank you.
Are there any speakers for this item? Are there any speakers for this item? Third and last time, are there any speakers for this item? Seeing none, I declare this item closed.
Item four, also an application for a text amendment to the city zoning bylaw, bylaw number 4368-2012.
Your worship and members of council, my name is Mike Dogwalt, development planner with the City of Coquitlam. This city-initiated zoning bylaw text amendment proposes to amend the zoning bylaw to include regulations for temporary residential sales centers. This city-initiated zoning bylaw text amendment would add a definition for residential sales centers, permit residential sales centers in all zones except the agricultural and resource zone, introduce several conditions that residential sales centers would be subject to, including setback in height regulations of the zone that the sale center is located in, the minimum parking requirements, fencing and separation from active construction areas. It will be only permitted on multifamily sites with approved development permits or single-family sites with approved subdivision plans. It will only be permitted to market the development approved onsite for which the sale center is located and must be removed once the development receives final occupancy. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4368-2012.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers for this item?
Your worship, we do have a speakers list, isn't there?
Oh, right. Just a minute, I've got it right here. Welcome, Cynthia, please.
Good evening, mayor and council. Cynthia Malosky, 91333 West Broadway with Polygon Homes. Polygon Homes supports the amendment to the bylaw and we'd just like to thank the planning department for expediting it to council this evening. Thank you.
Well, they expedited it as a public hearing. I'm not sure it'll make it to council tonight. Are there any speakers for this item? Other speakers for this item? Any other speakers for this item? I didn't expect any. Are there any other speakers for this item the last time? Seeing none, I declare this item and the public hearing closed. No, I declare this item closed.
This item closed. And the next item is an application for a text amendment to the city building bylaw, bylaw number 4362-2012.
Good evening, your worship and council members. This city-initiated zoning bylaw text amendment would amend the zoning bylaw to include additional subdivision regulations relating to a minimum lot with sizes, minimum lot size requirements to assist in the processing of lot consolidation in existing non-conforming situations as well as to streamline the regulations for creating new lots from road or lane cancellations. Specifically, the proposed text amendments would allow the following: consolidation of non-conforming lots to a new lot having less than the minimum lot size requirements in the zoning bylaw, at the discretion of the city subdivision improving officer, and the creation of a lot resulting from a road or lane cancellation having less than the minimum lot size requirements of the bylaw where such lot is created for a city purpose and is owned by the city. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4362. Thank you.
I have no speakers. Are there any speakers for this item? Are there any speakers for this item? Third and last time, are there any speakers for this item? Seeing none, I declare this item and the public hearing closed. We will convene in a few minutes a regular council meeting. We'll be working with staff on triaging some elements of the council meeting.